Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the New Bern Board of Alderman Meeting. At this time, the prayer tonight is going to be given by Alderman Dallas Blackiston.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Tonight, we have with us Pastor Flintes from the West New Bern Presbyterian Church. We're going to offer our invocation. Pastor.
Good evening. It's a great privilege to be here, and I want to thank Alderman Blackiston for the invitation, and the rest of you for your leadership and for all that you do. I'm the new pastor at West New Bern Presbyterian Church, and to be honest, I've been here hardly long enough to get used to the vinegar-based barbecue that you got here in East Carolina, but I'm sure in time it will become a household favorite. Although I've only been here for a few months, I've been impressed by the accessibility of our local government. In just this short time, I've had a chance to meet a number of you already in community events and fundraisers, rotary, and even on the street. And I think this shows a great value in growth in our community. So together, let us now pray. Creator God, we thank you, we thank you, we thank you for the beauty that surrounds us in the community outside these walls and the leadership that's gathered inside these walls tonight. We ask for your guidance and inspiration as we engage with our community and listen to the needs of others. Lord, we ask that you be with our elected officials tonight as they navigate together the needs of our city. Give them patience, wisdom, and peace, Lord, with and for each other and the people they serve. And remind us, Lord, that we are not identified by our political party or what neighborhood we live in, or even our race, or gender, or social status, but identified by your love as children of God. Amen.
Would you join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag of our country?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Matt Flirt, would you call the roll?
Alderman Blackiston.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Mitchell.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman White.
Yeah.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
Okay, everybody's here. Yes, sir, do you have something?
Yes, sir, I'd like to add something to the agenda tonight due to the situation that taking place on Saturday.
Okay, what did you want to do?
I'd like to make a motion that I could do something to speak on that.
Well, you can do that under new business, or you can amend the agenda and do it now?
I took in the agenda to do it there and get it out the way.
Okay, what is the purpose of, what is it that you want to do for the record?
For the record is for the displaced individuals that lost pretty much a lot of their belongings.
Okay. Does everybody understand that motion, and is there a second to that motion to amend the agenda?
Second.
Say, was Alderman Taylor?
Oh.
Oh, oh, sorry. I'm in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose the same. Alderman Kinsey, go ahead.
I'd like to thank the staff for expeditiously moving. It was elderly people that was hit by this flood, and immediately I called DOT to find that, could we get assistance to come in to help out? And shortly after that, the Public Works Director was able to find the problem and solve the problem, and we're coming up with a budget amendment, I mean, I think it's coming up soon that we can fix the situation. And we have some video to show what is taking place and where we are and where we're going and how we're going to take care of the situation. And I'd like to call in and shoot a line, please, to run the video then. I'd like for Mr. Montane to come up and speak a little bit about the situation, how we're taking care of the situation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Just want to give you a quick rundown of the events that took place on Saturday, June 24th, primarily between the hours of 6:00 PM and 8:00 PM. During that period of time, we received somewhere between five and a half to six inches of rain in probably about a 90-minute period. One of the areas that we came across was the Westwood Arms Apartments and the Conne Estates, Duffy Field area, excuse me, Conne Estates and Derby Park area that received quite a bit of flooding. On the map, you'll see that they all kind of flow to the northeast and actually drain past the public works facility into the quarry. One of the things, just a couple of pictures that have been taken by several of the Aldermen that's in, and that we just kind of want to share. These are the double 60-inch pipes that actually cross underneath Neuse Boulevard. You can see in the pictures that the debris around the pipe actually goes all the way up to Neuse Boulevard, which is where the water actually rose during the storm. This is just another picture, kind of showing it from a distance there. You see the trash and debris pretty much goes all the way up to Neuse Boulevard. And then this is a shot of the Westwood Arms Apartments in the background. There was actually about three of the buildings there that actually received some flooding. It is just upstream from the Neuse Boulevard crossing and the public works facility as well. And what we learned during this storm was, you know, something that we've been talking about for a while are some of the drainage improvements that we've been looking towards in the budget process is the upgrade of the storm drain pipes that actually cross underneath the stormwater facility. At that location, we currently had dual 36-inch pipes during the storm. The amount of water we received actually went through that facility and actually washed out the pipes and the road that actually crossed through the public works facility. The good news, as I said, this is a project that we had on the radar in this budget season to replace those pipes, to upsize those pipes with significantly larger pipes. I met on site earlier yesterday with Aviles Engineering, who's doing some drainage studies for us so that we size those pipes properly. And just as soon as we get that report, we will start the process of replacing those pipes with some larger pipes. Just a couple other photos here that we're sending in. I think Alderman Blackiston sent these in. Some of these are in the downtown area on Neuse Street and George Street. Going to flip to the next one. And then the next two are on Cypress and Queen Street. These are a couple photos where we have another capital improvement already planned in this year's budget season to do some drainage improvements in these areas as well, enlarging the pipe to try to solve these problems. Now, the one thing, the one thing I will say as far as that is, is, you know, what this is going to do, when you get five, six, seven, eight inches of rain in a short period of time, you're going to see some of this flash flooding. But by getting the larger pipes and getting things sized appropriately, it's going to get that water out of here quickly. I don't think we had any major blockages in this area. I think Mark can tell you that we were all out during the storm, and when the storm came through between, you know, seven, eight o'clock at night, by the time we were down in this area by 9:30, 10:00, and by then, the water had already drained out. So it's draining out, it's moving through the system, but we're going to work to improve the system with the $1.5 million that was budgeted as part of this year's process. Just a couple more photos. Mayor Outlaw took some photos. This is the new pipe that crosses underneath Trent Road down on Red Robin Lane. You can see the water is maintained in the ditch and crossing underneath the new pipe. And I think we've got one more that just kind of shows the flow of the water as well. And the next one's actually got a little video, and it's on Glen Burnie Road. Basically, the water that crosses underneath Neuse Boulevard and travels down towards the quarry, just kind of shows you the flow of the water during the storm. Or maybe you can hear the flow of the water.
Well, she's way on that, Mr. Montane. I know that most any new development or past developments normally have a series of engineering hydrology studies and things that, under certain rain events and all these things work and all that. And all that's designed that way. I'm not an engineer. But I do know that under events like hurricanes and all, all bets are off, so to speak, and no system is designed to work during a hurricane. I don't know that a system is designed to work in five inches of rain in an hour. Only concern is just like with that, I know that that new culvert there was designed probably for size that ditch. And I don't think whoever put that in would state, took into consideration because they're probably not geographically competent to know all the upstream problems that at some point are going to get worked out with all the drainage that goes all the way back to South Gate through here, borders that, goes out to Food Line, Chevrolet dealership, all that, and future impervious surface and friction and things associated with all that ditching. And I say that to say, I beg and I plead, anybody, state, city, federal government, please oversize these culverts. This is a brand-new culvert. This is a brand-new culvert. Five inches of rain, what are we going to do when we get a hurricane? Did somebody go to that much trouble to build and put that improvement in, and we're going to have the same flooding conditions there that we've had? I'm not in any way trying to beat you up on this. I'm just saying, I'm begging you to oversize these culverts because when you need them, everything I can read, you don't, nothing is designed for hurricanes and these events. And so why would you not oversize the unit to get this water out? Because if it'll do that on that, if you have a sustained two- or three-day rain event, I think some people around here still got flood problems, and we thought that was going to occur. That's all I got to say.
The only thing I will reiterate is, you know, we do have this in the budget to try to help alleviate some of these issues. We'll start on the one at the public works facility here very soon, just as soon as we can get the engineering report back, and the other ones will follow immediately after.
Thank you so very much.
We're on the way with that. Correct?
We are. I think JR can give you a little bit more details on the process.
Yeah, just real quick, the, we're planning to bring to you in July, setting up a project fund for the $1.5 million stormwater improvements that was approved by the board for us to do specifically with these particular projects. And to the point of Alderman, I'm sorry, Mayor Outlaw's comments, typically DOT, they'll design, or has been their history, to design side ditches to a 10-year storm, crossing ditches to a 25-year storm. And most of the charts that we have for this particular rain event go up to a 100-year storm, and this one was uncharitable, that it was a five, six-inch rain in a very short amount of periods, a short amount of time.
We've been having these NOAA rains here for the last four, five years, though, and that's what, I mean, it's a pattern, and it's going to continue, and I want them designed for NOAA flood.
Mayor, just two comments I wanted to make. I was out and about during that storm Saturday afternoon, wrapping up a birthday party, and I called Mr. Stevens and told him that there was something going on on Neuse Boulevard. I was headed to my parents' house, and it was just about impassable. Within about a half hour, there was five or six police officers there, helping with traffic. I know that Matt, Avery, and the staff got on board really quick, so I just wanted to commend them on that. It was definitely one of those storms I don't think anybody was really anticipating. And the second, last comment I wanted to make, I was copied on an email from someone that mentioned the term, "This was just a little old rain event. What would we do if this was a hurricane?" But if I'm not mistaken, I think we broke a record on Saturday. It was since 1989, I believe, was the date, it was the most rain we'd had in one day. So it was more than just a little old rain event. But I do want to make, give staff kudos because they did jump right on it. I think we are headed in the right direction with the $1.5 million improvements.
Does the board think that, when is our next workshop?
July.
Okay, would this be a topic for the workshop? I mean, because you made your finance, and not that we're trying to micro-manage, I really think the board should take a physical tour. I mean, maybe get in a bus and physically tour these improvements so that we know what's going on, so that we can keep our residents aware. This did, as Alderman Odom said, there are several of the buildings that could have averted this with some improvements they have for, they know where they are, has a history of flooding, but it happened so quickly. By the time they saw it coming, it wasn't time to do anything about it. So, correct, Alderman Kinsey? It just kind of happened so quickly.
It happened so quickly because when we were speaking with the residents today, they thought it was just going to be a regular rainstorm. But as we seen, as we seen when we was there earlier today, that it was a disaster for those elderly people. Some of them don't even have anywhere to go. And I've been trying to see what I could do in finding shelter for a couple of them, and today I was able to find a place for them to stay. But it just came down so quickly, and we just, you know, I just like Alderman said, that the staff was there on time to try to do everything that they could do expeditiously to move that, to help the water to move.
Okay, yes, sir.
First, I want to recognize we have Commissioner Janet Sampson in attendance tonight. This just so happened that we were talking about flooding and ditches. Mr. Sampson, a couple of weeks ago, took a ride through the neighborhood and looked at some ditches in the Duffy Field area, Deebus Court, the hospital area, and he ran into a little couple of stumbling blocks. So now that we're going to definitely speak about it at the work session, I would ask Commissioner Sampson, if he wouldn't mind coming out to the work session in July for us. So we definitely need to talk about the flooding and the ditches.
I think they can all bus go around and take a look at these things.
Thank you, sir, for attending.
So just so I'm providing everything that I need to provide and have staff provide everything I need to provide, so are we, our work session next week, next Tuesday, is going to be a drive-around work session? Is that, am I understanding that?
You mean on the 18th?
Yeah, I'm sorry, July the 18th. Yes.
Well, I'll tell you, there's a lot of things that this board has found that taking fiscal tours of, it certainly made them understand that fiscal needs a lot better than if, I don't know how you can, if the board is serious about some of the drainage issues in New Bern, they need to go on a bus ride around a little bit. Now, does the board want to do that? We've done this in the past. Mayor Bayless, I don't remember what the issue was, we physically took a bus tour on some items, so I don't know anything more, well, it's one thing, serious, but right now, I mean, this is fixed to be hurricane season, and I'm for taking a bus ride if it fails.
I'm second that, we definitely need to.
I can't make a motion, so you...
I'd like to make a motion on a work session. It'd be a ride, a ride-around work session, seeing what's going on in the community. As I went through a chief boy's training, you learn more as you go out. You know what you're talking about if you go out and see. So we're sitting here talking about flooding might not affect the whole area, so you don't see what it affects the entire city, other parts of the city. So if we go out and see it as a whole, as a group, we can make a better decision on helping the Duffy Fields, the Deebus Court, South Gate, all over the city. So that's my motion to be a tour.
I'd like to make a couple of comments.
Did you get a second?
I did.
Okay. Discussion?
Well, just comments. You know, hindsight is 20/20. It's great to look in your rearview mirror after an event like that, which is unfortunate, that we have people that get displaced from flooding. When I was out Saturday night, I took pictures, and I had some of those up there. There are other ones. Two points here. For the last two years, we have arm-wrestled over increasing the stormwater fee so that we could deal appropriately with these types of unforeseen events. And Mayor, you're correct, we need to oversize, but we need to oversize our thinking in terms of how we approach these things in the future, not simply after the fact, and we realize that there's flooding and the ditches can't handle it. The second point that I would make, the photographs that we looked up and saw up there on the screen, you had water that was flowing through new drainage structures, culverts, corrugated pipe, but you also had, in the older parts of the city, I'm sure most parts of Duffy Field that I went into, where the water wasn't flowing, okay? And that right there is the problem that I was hoping that we would address in 2016, but we chose not to address it. So, yes, I think we did need to take a bus trip, but I think we need to look at more than just the rearview mirror in terms of anticipating the needs of this city and our citizens, our shareholders, Mayor, of all neighborhoods. Thank you.
Reason water is not flowing at a certain point over in my Duffy Fields, it's like you saw them two, that water coming through those pipes. I've seen the water coming through those pipes filled up on the other side, and just a little bit more corroded, it could come across that little bridge behind the graveyard. When the river rises over there, that's something I used to talk about all the time. When the river rises over there, if the river's high, it keeps that gate closed. If it wasn't for the pumps that you have in there, a certain time, a certain time they would be cut on, which pumps some more of the water out of the Duffy Field area. I think the last few months back, I asked that we go through there and clean it out and get it prepared because no telling what lot of happen. And as long as we keep right on coming up with issues dealing with flooding, and when we do work in certain areas and does not work totally in the areas that flood, it's going to still be a flooding problem. If you got a flooding problem, you need to work basically, even the whole city can't flood. You need to work basically where the areas have flooded and been flooded for years. We've gotten that down a little bit, but it's still a long ways to go.
Mr. Montane, I think under, this being pretty much a worst-case scenario, I know that the 21,000-gallon pumps were doing all they could do and still weren't pumping out on Syme Street extension, but nobody got flooded. I know there was a lot of flooding in the yards, but at least it kept the water out of the houses. Is that correct?
The only flooding I'm aware of as far as the houses is the Westwood Arms Apartments. I will tell you, the pumps did kick on, they were all running, they were all running full capacity. When we took our tour through the Duffy Field area and the Duffy Field Canal, the water was pretty much maintained to the canal. It wasn't up in the houses. We did have some backup in the Biddle Street Pond area, Kay and those streets over those areas, but that's just a matter of the time that takes the pump to catch up with the amount of rain we had.
We have a question for the city manager. What else was on our work session agenda?
I was trying to think, Brenda, do you recall what was on?
Because I'm assuming if we start at 6:00, and we ride around with these projects, that's going to be the bulk of our work session, I would imagine.
I think the only thing was discussion of the order of use. I think we haven't.
We've had that on there for discussion, but we can discuss that anytime, I guess.
Mr. Stevens, would you want to start earlier on the mayor, on the 5:00 show?
Sure. I think it would probably be of our interest if specifically the board, if you have individual locations that each of you want to go look at, that way we can draft kind of an itinerary and try to keep on that schedule and timeframe, if we're going to try to hit all of them before it gets too dark. So if we're going to do that, that way I can get a bus driver lined up as well as have an itinerary set so that we can get a route. I'm sure each and every one of you probably have some location that you want to look at. If you will submit those to us, Brenda and myself, Chrissy, we'll make sure and get that stuff coordinated.
Mr. Mayor.
But 6:00 PM would probably work, I think, if we started at 6:00.
I would like to suggest that, number one, the city has taken a long-nailed step forward by budgeting the money to work on the stormwater system this year with the $1.5 million. It's overdue, it's needed, but those monies were to focus on the absolute, was the bare minimum that was needed to focus on the absolute most critical portions of the stormwater system that had to be addressed right now. It did not, that did not address the not-quite-as-bad stormwater infrastructure that the city does not have. And what I would urge the board to look at as we, as this moves forward, is this time to come up with a long-term, city-wide program to address stormwater issues. I think the ride-around is a good idea. There are some areas that do flood, and then there are some wards that, most of them don't flood. And if you live in the primarily non-flooding wards, it doesn't seem as big an issue. If you live in one that floods frequently, then it is a hugely high priority issue. But I, it's always a temptation to keep discussing and keep thinking, but I think it's time to move towards a decision point and a project plan to address this over the next five years. I think the city residents need that, I think they deserve that. And in some places, it's an issue of the pipes, and in the other places, it's issues no pipes, only drainage dishes, ditches. But let's look at resolving the problem and not just discussing it.
Okay. Yes?
Mr. Montane, can you confirm that the $1.5 was covering just the critical? I thought it was the next level as well.
No, I think we had a higher priority, and then we kind of had a next level, and it was the higher priority and did not include the next level or anything in the future.
That's right.
And how much was that? Do you remember?
Top of my head, I don't recall.
And just for the point of that, that was all kind of estimates, I'm looking at it. We haven't done actually real plans and real cost at this point.
Okay, any further discussion?
No, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
There was still a motion on the table about the two.
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, a motion, and I think Alderman, like second.
Yes, sir.
I'm in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose the same.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, this time we're going to go to the consent agenda.
Mayor, will we approve consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Odom, seconded by Alderman Taylor, is there further discussion? I'm in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, item number six. Consider adopting a resolution approving a notice of limitations of use and restrictions for property at 1397 Country Club Road. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. The city acquired real property at 1307 Country Club Road for the purpose of relocating Parks and Recreation Administrative Offices, grant funds, and the amount of $55,000 from the North Carolina Public Beach and Coastal Waterfront Access Program were utilized to acquire this property along with other grants. The grant stipulated the property was to be retained and used for public access. Therefore, in doing so, a deed restriction is necessary to reflect the limitations needed to execute and record with the registered deeds, and that's what's before you tonight. Myself, Attorney Davis, are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Board, have any questions about that? It's a pleasure, board, item number six.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, we adopt a resolution approving a notice of limitations of use and restrictions for the property located at 1307 Country Club Road.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Odom, seconded by Alderman Mitchell, is there further discussion? CNN, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Alderman White.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Mitchell.
Yes.
Alderman Taylor.
Yes.
Alderman Blackiston.
Yes.
Motion carries, item number seven. Consider adopting a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Carolina East Foundation. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor. Parks and Recreation Department is seeking authorization from the board to apply for a grant from Carolina East Foundation, the amount of $14,000. An in-kind match is not required in this particular instance. If received, the funds will be used to purchase exercise equipment for Stanley White Recreation Center. Memo from Mr. Montane is included in your package as well as the copy of the grant application.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution authorizing the submission of the grant application to the Carolina East Foundation.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Taylor, seconded by Alderman Blackiston, is there further discussion? CNN, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Blackiston.
Alderman Blackiston.
Yes.
Alderman Taylor.
Yes.
Alderman Mitchell.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman White.
Yes.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Motion carries, item number eight. Consider adopting a budget ordinance amendment for fiscal year 2016-17. Consider adopting a budget ordinance amendment for fiscal year 2016-17, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. As we do pretty much every year at the end of our fiscal year to clean up our accounting, we typically bring before you a budget ordinance amendment that includes a myriad of different things, and that's what's before you tonight. This final budget ordinance for fiscal year 16-17 ensures that all of these projected expenditures have sufficient funds to finish off the year and pay our expenses. It also realigns our revenues to equal those appropriations. With regards to the general fund, tonight amendments are being made to acknowledge additional costs for sanitation, leaf and limb, police, parks and recreation. Additional funds are redistributed within various divisions of Parks and Recreation and Public Works to account for this. Administration's funds are reduced to provide for transfer to the building funds to cover the cost of painting the clock tower, which we've already done. We'll be doing the roof repair actually here pretty soon. Electric and sewer funds are amended to meet the actual payment in lieu of taxes that is due, and the electric fund is also amended to redistribute funds within its various divisions. The emergency telephone system fund needs modification to recognize ineligible costs, and the grant fund is amended to appropriately reflect the Bulletproof Vest grant. The last thing that we have is the Employee Benefits Insurance Fund, and that one before you tonight is, the budget amendment is to amend to cover additional claim costs, including settlements with employees through workers' compensation. So, we're happy to answer any questions. You'll see in your packet, Mr. Savatelli has provided an explanation along with all of the different sections necessary for this final budget amendment. We'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no discussion of questions, I would like to make a motion that we adopt a budget ordinance amendment for fiscal year 2016 and 17 for operating budgets. Second.
Motion by Alderman Mitchell, seconded by Alderman Kinsey, is there further discussion? Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Mitchell?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number nine. Consider adopting an amendment to the grant project ordinance for the 2014 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. The ordinance to establish the 2014 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant Fund was established on the 28th of October, 2014. All of the accounting entries and expenditures have been completed for this grant, and at this time, staff is requesting that the project fund be closed. Memo is included from Mr. Savatelli with regards to this item.
I'd like to make a motion adopting an amendment to the grant project ordinance for the 2014 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Taylor, seconded by Alderman Blackiston, is there further discussion? C and N, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Blackiston.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Mitchell?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number 10. Consider adopting an amendment to the grant project ordinance for the City Market Workforce Development Training Center, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. An ordinance was adopted on the 9th of August, 2016, as you recall, to establish a grant project fund to transform the old city warehouse on First Street into a workforce development training center and market space. The city has received $1,298,250 in grant funds from the U.S. Department of Commerce, Economic Development Administration. The project ordinance that's before you tonight needs to be amended to recognize and appropriate these funds. We're happy to answer any questions you may have. By the way, just as an update, staff is working with the Community College as well as the county and other groups that are associated with this with regards to us having a groundbreaking sometime in August. We will let you know about that. But this is with regards to our big project out on First Street.
Alderman Odom?
Yes, Mayor, just wanted to give the board an update. At our last C-1A meeting, if you recall, the board was in agreement that we request $100,000 in support from C-1A for the Workforce Development Center. Just want to give you an update. Mr. Stevens, Ms. Ruggeri, and myself made that presentation to the executive board, actually the full board of directors for C-1A. We received some questions, some valid, some I would say not so much. But nonetheless, it was approved for the $50,000, and then the additional $50,000 is going to be decided by the executive committee for C-1A, which, that's the city manager, county manager. Mr. Stevens, who else is on?
It's myself and Frank Bodark, both city managers, the county manager, Jack White. Also, you have Dan Roberts, Owen Andrews, you have David Stroud, and Lee, gosh, I'm sorry. Lee's name escapes me.
Lee Hodge.
Lee Hodge, sorry. Lee Hodge, sorry, Lee. Lee Hodge, who also sits on the executive board that represent the private side.
So, the reason I brought that up is if any member on the board has a relationship with any of those individuals, I'd encourage you to reach out to them. When is your meeting?
We actually have a conference call that's scheduled for Friday morning.
I would encourage us to reach out to them and answer any questions they may have because ultimately, that small group is going to decide whether we get the additional $50,000 or not. And again, I'm not going to go through the whole spiel, but ever since the creation of C-1A, each and every single meeting that we have had, workforce development has been the number one, if not 1A-type discussion that we've had. And I think it's very important that C-1A steps up. And with the money they have in the bank, I believe it's around 1.7, 1.8 million, if I remember correctly, they've done a tremendous job of doing some fundraising. I recognize that this is a significant ask, $100,000, but that board was created to help with economic development. And if you don't have workers, you don't have economic development. So, I encourage you to reach out to those individuals.
I have a question. Has C-1A funded any other workforce development programs in the county since it was established?
To my knowledge, the Craven Works, the Job Fair is what the biggest expenditure has been. I think it was $5,000 that they paid to the Sun Journal to help advertise that. So, to my knowledge, that's the only expenditure that's been.
But that was a job fair, not a workforce training program, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, anybody else on this item 10?
I'd like to make a motion adopting amendment to the grant project ordinance for the City Market Workforce Development Training Center Grant Project Fund.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Taylor, seconded by Alderman Blackiston, is there further discussion? C and N, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Mitchell?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number 11. Consider adopting a budget ordinance amendment in the General Capital Projects Fund, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Just some cleaning up here. The General Capital Projects Fund was established to account for various capital projects that we have been working on. The projects for Stanley White Recreation Center, Third Avenue entrance extension, has been completed. Downtown Information Center, or the Cub House known as to people in the community, has been completed. East Front River Walk has been completed over where the Sudan Trina property is, and the First Street Corridor improvements for Lawson Creek Park have all been completed. The net remaining balance of $8,330 will be returned to the general fund by reducing transfers to the General Capital Project Fund. Mr. Savatelli has included a memo in his packet. Happy to answer the questions you have.
More questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we adopt a budget ordinance amendment to the General Capital Projects Fund. Second.
Motion by Alderman Mitchell, seconded by Alderman Kinsey, is there further discussion? C and N, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Blackiston.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Mitchell?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item.
Yes, sir. Mayor, before we go to appointments, I'd like to have an amendment that I'd like to do, and it's one dealing with Duffy Field and Pleasant Hill.
Okay, do you want to do that on our new business?
Can we do that on new business, or we do it now? New business.
Uh, new business, sir.
Would that be okay, sir?
Sorry, I mean.
We'll be there in a second. Appointment starts with Alderman Odom?
No, sir.
Alderman White?
Yes, sir, I have an appointment. The appointment I have is Mr. Gary Allison. I appointed him last time we met, and when I appointed, he called and let me know that he realized that people will be sitting at a certain period of time. He said that that's too long for him to be sitting on his condition. So, he asked me to withdraw his name. So, when I withdraw his name, I had a list, so I'd like to make another appointment in place of Mr. Allison. The appointment I'd like to make is Mr. James O. Woods, Jr. And I have the information, everything that I need to get to the clerk.
Have a second to the motion.
Mr. White, what board is that for?
This is first one. First one, that's for the historic reservation.
Okay, that's what I was gonna make.
Motion by Alderman White, seconded by Alderman Taylor. Any discussion? Alman, favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything else, Alderman White?
No, sir.
Or appointments?
No, sir.
Alderman Kinsey?
Not at this moment, sir.
Alderman Mitchell?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have three appointments, please. First of all, I would like to appoint Mr. Ross Beebe to the Board of Adjustments as the alternate in Peter Ados's seat.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, is there discussion? Alman, favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same.
My second appointment is to appoint Mr. John Skinner to the New Bern Police Department Civil Service Board.
Second.
Motion and second, is there discussion? Alman, favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same.
And my last one, I would also like to make the appointment of Mr. Craig Vader to the New Bern Police Department Civil Service Board.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Alman, favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Alman, same. Mayor and City Clerk, you get all your motions and seconds, okay?
I do, thank you.
I didn't mean to run too fast, but, okay. You got anything else?
No, sir.
Alderman Taylor?
No, sir.
Alderman Blackiston?
No, sir.
Okay, attorney's report.
Attorney's report, Mayor.
City manager's report.
I just wanted to remind, and I'm sure probably one of y'all have this on your list, but being this is our last meeting in June, we have our July 4th events next Tuesday, a week from tonight. And in the case of rain, we'll be rescheduled for the 5th of July, which will be the next day. So, that would be the fireworks show only at that point. So, I just wanted to make sure that the public knows about that. Please exercise caution when you're riding around downtown, it can be extremely crowded, and there will be available parking. It will be launched from Lawson Creek Park like it has been for the past several years. And we encourage all the public to come out and enjoy the fireworks that night, so, thank you.
Okay, this time, the new business, starting with Alderman Odom?
None tonight, sir.
Alderman White?
None.
You had your motion.
Oh, I'm thinking about something else.
Yes, I have, I'd like to donate a certain amount of funds to Duffy Field Community Watch and Pleasant Hill Community Watch for National Night Out. I also found out later on that I have to do a reverse.
Yeah. What Alderman White is asking to do is to make a motion to appropriate $400 each to Duffy Field and Pleasant Hill for the FY17 National Night Out. So, he wants to take it from his board appropriations.
That's your motion, sir?
Yes, sir, I agree.
Yeah, we have a motion by Alderman White, seconded by Alderman Taylor, is there further discussion? Alman, favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Anything else, Alderman White?
Yes, I usually donate to, it's a medical fund. But I received a call, not Savatelli, Savatelli, I received a call from Dr. Bonwell. So, that one, a certain amount, I like to donate the rest of whatever I have to his organization. And they, you know the organization, but I can't, I don't have it in there.
Yes, it's the NC Medisys and Old North State Medical Foundation, over the kind of medication giveaway on August 2.
I'm clarifying his motion, can you help him with his motion?
Yes, sir, he's asking to appropriate the remaining $200 from his board appropriations to NC Medisys for FY17.
Okay, and did you make a second?
Second.
Okay, and Alderman Mitchell made a second.
That's awful, man.
Yes, sir. Alman, favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Anything else on our new business?
No, sir.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes. And speaking about the flooding again, a lot of homes, a lot of retirement places are built in a very low area. And it's been a lot of conversation that we give out permits to build a house in a ditch. That is not correct. That happened maybe when they was giving those type of permits out, when they was building the houses in a low area.
We have a free board of 11 feet, is that correct?
We do now, yes.
So, you can't build under 11 feet, nothing, anything new?
Anything, he does not like that anymore. That's why I was explaining to the people that, you know, that's not what we do. And so, I just want to make that correction there for the public, the ones that did not understand the building code, because we have several structures in my district that I serve under that floods quite often because of the, it's very low there. To the Old North State, I'd like to make a donation there also of $400 to that organization for the medication that they would be giving away to people that cannot afford any meds.
I apologize, sir, I missed that.
Yeah, go ahead, make your motion. I think Alderman Taylor is gonna give everybody a lot of information on this in just a few minutes, but.
I would like to donate $400 to the Old North State.
Is that the name of Alderman Taylor?
It's NC Medisys, he's based, Old North State Medical Foundation is one of the organizations that's sponsoring it. The NC Medisys is the top sponsor, but you're correct.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, second of Alderman Mitchell, is there further discussion? Alman, favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Anything else?
I think that's it.
Alderman Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Number one, I would also like to donate $250 from my Alderman Discretionary Fund to NC Medisys.
Second.
Motion and second by Alderman Taylor, any further discussion? Alman, favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Go ahead.
Two more. Number two, I believe it is time for the board to start looking at scheduling the evaluation of our finance director. And I would ask Mr. Mayor if we could ask if Alderman Odom would undertake to honcho that effort that she does so lately.
I would be happy to, but what we've done in the past, Mr. Stevens, you want to tell them the process?
Basically, whenever we performed our charter change, we had some clarity as to who's going to be performing the evaluation. It will be I that performs his evaluation because he works under the general supervision of the city manager. In doing so, what I do is come into a closed session and share the results of that evaluation with the board, and that's an opportunity for the board to make any kind of comments or additional things that they wish to see from the finance director as far as his performance and duties. Typically, we do that in conjunction with the evaluations that occur because I take care of all of my department heads based on what was approved in the budget with regards to increases in salaries based on their performance and merit. So, at that point, that's when I'll be performing all of those. Happy to bring those, I think the last year was August, I think, whenever we, might have been July.
June.
Huh? Huh?
It was June.
Was it June? Okay. So, I'm happy to do it and perform it whenever the board so chooses.
I kind of left Alderman Mitchell high and dry on that one, that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That sometimes it's, you know, in all due respect to the, to the employee, you don't, you know, it's not fair to the employee four or five months down the road that the person's not been evaluated, and so it's as much for the employees' good as it is the board's, and so, I just want to say that, and we just didn't, I don't think the board wants this thing dragged out.
Sure.
You know, not things dragged out, but so it doesn't drag out.
I'd be happy to bring that to you at the next board meeting, or the second meeting in July, whichever one you would prefer.
I think the second meeting in July, we don't, would be fantastic, and thank you. You know me, I always like timelines. And the third one, and this is the weightiest, weightiest issue of all of them, is we've discussed multiple times in the past, there is a great need to make some infrastructure improvements within the city, and I would like the board to move to take some next steps to ensure that these potential projects keep moving forward and do not languish. I have received numerous emails from constituents in Ward Tiff Three regarding Old Airport Road, and I know that my colleagues have received similar input from their constituents on Oaks Road. Additionally, to increase the economic development potential in the main corridor of our city, I believe that we should include the Trent Road improvements as well. So, to encourage economic development, ensure public safety, and to provide for safe and efficient roadways, I would like to make a motion that the board direct staff to develop a set of plans and design specifications that are sufficient to publish a bid for these improvements, and to come back to the board with a firmer estimate, specifically for resurfacing Oaks Road, National Avenue, and George Street from Saint, from Southland Birdie Road to Pollack Street, widening and improving Old Airport Road from DeBurnham Circle to the bridge south of Evans Mill, consistent with our bike and pedestrian plan that takes it out to thirty-two feet, and widening Trent Road from two lanes to three from Simmons Street to Martin Luther King Boulevard.
Got a motion, you got your second, may discussion on this motion?
Yes, sir. Mayor, just make one comment. As far as the Trent Road corridor goes, it is important that we get that three-lane, but I did want to make, just to comment during the discussion period, I know this is an exploratory sort of first step to move forward, that there's some requirements from Columbia Development for some improvements they have to make, so I just want to make sure we include staff, ensures that gets included in our conversation because there's some improvements that they're required to make as well. I don't want them to think that we're taking over all of the construction that's got to be done, so.
Well, Mr. Davis, do we need to include that in the motion, or is there a motion? Is that, I would like to do that.
I think staff are in that direction, so I think the motion is fine.
Okay.
And there are lots of moving parts to that motion, for example, the city doesn't even have control of Old Airport Road yet, but certainly the step one is to find out what the cost might be, and then talk with DOT about how we might move forward.
Okay.
I think we need to clarify this, because I think a number of people have been concerned that the city was putting these funds on a road that was not in the city limits, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the vast majority of Old Airport Road from DeBurnham Way down to Old County Line Road is a city responsibility.
I don't believe so.
Some of it is, it's kind of interchangeable on Airport Road. The first section, as you come out of DeBurnham Circle, is the city's, then it switches to DOT, it stays DOT until you get to Evans Mill, then it becomes the city again. Once you turn around the curve of past, I guess, past Evans Mill, then it switches to DOT again, which goes across the bridge and up to the terminus at Old County Line Road, or County Line Road. So, at that point, we would need to probably bring in DOT to confirm everything, but ultimately it doesn't change what your motion is, in my opinion, because you're directing staff to look at getting some plans and specifications necessary so that we can go to bid and find out what that cost is going to be. Then at that point, I think what you do is, is we would probably start talking with DOT about their participation in this program, which we've kind of already done on several instances.
Right, but most of that has been informal, whereas this is beginning the more formal process of moving forward with these infrastructure improvements that are so badly needed.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you have a motion and a second, is there any further questions or discussion about the assignment? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Anything else?
I'm done, sir.
Thank you. Alderman Taylor?
Yes, sir. As you heard, a couple of the Alderman here has already graciously donated, donated some of the discretionary funds for a well-deserved event, first-time event ever been in Craven County. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about the event, so you can understand why they did it and what they're doing it for. NC Med Assist and Old North State Medical Foundation, Dr. Bonwell and myself, we will be hosting a free over-the-counter medication giveaway day for those in need and reside in the following counties, Craven, Pamlico, and Jones. Medicines such as pain relief, first aid, vitamins, children's medicine, digestive aids, Benadryl, Aspirin will be available at no cost to all the residents. Participants will receive a minimum of ten items valued at approximately eighty-dollar average retail price. Each event distributes over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of medication, over-the-counter medication, depending on the number of individuals served. It takes seventy-five hundred dollars to bring this program here, that's why we should be requesting sponsorship to have this. The event is August the twelfth, from nine to two P.M., nine A.M. to two P.M. at Stanley White Recreation Center. Only restriction, you must be of age of eighteen years old. You can be a millionaire, you can be on the street. If you say you need medications and get in that line, we're trying to do three thousand people. We did it in Lenoir, Ontho County last year, we did two thousand people. If I had to guess to make, it was about five, six hundred military guys came off Capitol Jun. So, we do not turn around, if you're in line and you need the medication, you say you need the medication, we're going to give you the medication. We can't determine whether you financial need or you're financially not need. So, if you're in line, we're going to give it to you. This is a program that's never been done on eastern North Carolina, other than Onslow, Lenoir, and Dublin. Normally, NC Med used to do it out western North Carolina, but last year we decided to bring it to eastern North Carolina, and after me going through a couple of events, I'd have said New Bern needs an event just like this. So, this is why we're doing it. And again, I would like to thank each one of you all for giving up your own free will of your heart. And then with that said, Dr. Bonwell reached out to a few of you all, talking about the program, and I let him do the talking to you all, because it's a conflict of interest when I speak with you all in reference to something like this. So, I'd like to make a motion authorizing city manager to use twelve hundred dollars from community development line item and administrative department.
Second. Does everybody understand the motion? Anybody have questions? Yes, sir?
Question, Alderman Taylor is, and this may be a question for staff, is there a way that we can advertise this on CTV Three? I want to make sure that everybody in Dublin, like you said, regardless of where you live or what ward or anything else, if you have an opportunity, if we're going to participate citywide. I know there were some restrictions on some things that we can and can't put on CTV.
Yeah, I think we could find a way to do that possibly. I'll get with Colleen to make sure that we get, yeah, she said that she gave me the thumbs up, so I think we can take care of that and get it on Facebook and Twitter and everything.
We're doing Facebook, we're doing Channel Twelve, we're doing news, we're doing the paper, we're doing every item of advertising there's known to make. So, again, the word will get out, churches, businesses, schools, Walmart, parking lot, wherever we can get the word out, we getting the word out. So, again, thank you all for that.
Okay. Mayor, you got the motion and the second, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Anything else?
One more thing. Free lunch all summer for children in our community. There's a program that's going on, and I went to it a couple of times, and it's for all kids that are in need of a lunch, that's cut and dry, need something to eat, need something to eat. It's held at Trent Park Elementary School from eleven A.M. to one P.M., Half Block High School, eleven A.M. to one P.M., Craven Terrace Center, eleven to twelve P.M., Trent Court Center from eleven to twelve. It's from Monday to Thursday, starting June the fourteenth, which has already started, and ending August the seventeenth. So, if you know any kids, any kids that's out there that's hungry, that need something to eat, have them report to one of these locations, and they have a hot meal, have something to drink, and it's a nutritious meal, vegetables, something that they need to eat. So, I just want to put that out. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes, sir. Last but not least, I have a question for Alderman Taylor on the North Carolina Med Assist. It says that no ID is required, but is there verification that folks only get one contribution?
They're going to have a volunteer sheet and have your name, your address, and everything on the sheet. You put your name on the top, once you put your name on the top, we will verify, you got to be eighteen, and then we'll, then you pick your medicine.
Okay. Well, in that context, I'd like to present my motion for making a contribution of two hundred dollars to North Carolina Med Assist. I would also like to include in that motion one hundred dollars to each of the neighborhood associations for National Night Out to include the historic Riverside Neighborhood Association, historic Downtown Residence Association, the Ginn, Historic Ginn Association, and the Trent Court Residents Association, one hundred dollars each, sir. That's my motion.
Second. Motion and second, is there discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Anything on your desk there?
I don't, sir.
Anything else? Okay, anything else on our new business?
Yeah, yes, sir. I have one question, and this is echoing Alderman Odom's comment. In terms of the lunch program, is that, is it possible to also make sure that that is put out on C, City TV as well?
I'll look at Colleen for the thumbs up, but I'm sure that's probably, I'm sure, yes, there's a thumbs up, so yes, we can get that out there to me.
Please, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, nothing further in the business. Do we need a closed session tonight?
We do, Mayor, members of the board, we need a brief closed session, 243, 1311A4 to discuss a potential economic development incentive.
Is there a motion? And second?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Okay, you have a motion, second, you got a closed session. All in favor of the motion, say?
Yes, sir.
Hold on, sir. I'd like to call for another part into the closed session with a person. Well, how do I go about doing that?
It would have to involve an employee that reports to the board directly.
Oh.
That's a personnel matter that the board could discuss, otherwise we couldn't.